Short.
Here.
Goddard.
Here.
Gambino.
Here.
Leff.
Here.
Bates.
Here.
Grant.
Aye.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Do I give a motion to approve the December eighteen minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Goddard, seconded by Short. Any discussion? Call a roll, please.
Calendar.
Yes.
Short.
Yes.
Goddard.
Yes.
Gambino.
Yes.
Leff.
Yes.
Bates.
Yep.
Grant.
Aye.
I would like to thank the outgoing mayor for all her work in the past. Okay, am I supposed to do anything else besides...
That's my action.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't touch your jeans.
Steal my thunder.
Go ahead. You're on.
Yes, Mayor Leff, please stand. On behalf of the entire city council, the city staff and crew, and the citizenry of Depot Bay, we want to thank you for two years of excellent services, Mayor to this city. Bit of appreciation custom for you today. I'm gonna present to you and a promise that a member of the gift is...
Is all the way.
The champion is only mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. It has been an honor, a privilege, a joy, and occasionally a really bad pain in the butt. But I wouldn't trade the last two years for anything. I have, I've loved every second of it. I really appreciate all of the people that I've gotten to know a lot better and hope that I can continue to serve you for another forty years. There are things to ship here.
Yeah, with care.
Has to take my chair to alternate two trips.
We won't change over here.
Where am I going?
We're away.
Okay.
Out.
There's great places.
There you go. See how officially we've learned how to do this stuff? Thank you very much. Or I should say, almost miss you, Mayor.
Almost. Not quite. Not till the same. Am I first?
You can be first. I'll be first.
I find yours. Myself in the office of... Demine myself in the office of... Mayor, City of Depot Bay. Mayor, City of Depot Bay. To which I have been elected. To which I have been elected. To the best of my ability. To the best of my ability. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I say at the same time, try to get best. Say your name.
I say your name.
I had to. I will support...
I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
And will faithfully and honorably demean myself.
And will faithfully and honorably demean myself.
In the office of city council member.
To the office of city council member.
City of Depot Bay.
City of Depot Bay.
To which I've been elected.
To which I've been elected.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations all three.
Thank you.
All right. We'll be going with the agenda. We already did a roll call to establish the quorum. Next item is accounts payable. And as you'd like, I reviewed the accounts payable this morning and I approved them. And so actually, I could make a motion to approve the accounts payable as presented.
Correct.
And can answer any questions. Seconded, call for discussion. Any discussion? Okay, call a roll, please.
Short.
Yes.
Goddard.
Yes.
Leff.
Yes.
Gambino.
Yes.
Bates.
Yes.
Grant.
Aye.
Calendar.
Yes.
Okay, next item on the agenda is interview and appoint applicants for city commissions and committees. I believe we have two of them on the agenda, and I'm told that both people are here this evening. Sidney Hatch.
Hi.
And you are...
One of my responsibilities was planning... Many of the services for state hospital patients. And I did a lot with selling and providing the insurance. And I've just been interested in planning all of the results. When I saw there was a vacant position, that hadn't been filled through election, I ran.
And we're glad you did. Counselors?
Sidney, Hatch is a common name, but there was a man I greatly admired that lived here in Lincoln County. He was an Oregon State Police Officer, Jim Hatch. Any relation?
I don't know. I haven't heard that name.
Okay. Anyway, so do you have a certain... My second question is more to the point here, is do you have a certain item or an idea that you are interested in that the planning commission has to, that it's on its plate to decide? Any certain agenda that you would like to push forward?
I have to be honest and say I haven't followed the planning commission.
So you don't have any certain agenda that you're thinking of?
I have one interest, but it may not fit within the purpose of the planning commission.
Okay, what would that be?
I serve on Forest Management Committee for Little Well Cove, and we have been very concerned about the forest along the highway and its potential to catch fire from sparks from passing vehicles and spreading to our development. And we've been removing it, and I watch the fires in Paradise with some horror. And I know how connected forest was to the Tillamook burn and the Mammon burn early in Oregon's history. As a planable agent, it spread quickly. And I would be interested in seeing what, if any, actions the city might even take in requiring developers to assure that it was cleared from their property a certain number of years after the development was in place. What if any other ways the community might be interested in it? But I realize it's a very complex issue of forest service property and private property. City property is business, so it's something you can just ram through. But it's an interest.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I was wondering if you could give us just a thumbnail sketch of your philosophy on the planning and growth in the community.
Well, we've been in Little Well Cove for about a year, so I can't complain or I can't say that I have a vision for what the community should be. Some elements in other communities that we visited, we argued a lot throughout the country. And some sort of enhancement of the covering by way of awnings and business is over the sidewalk so that people gather the money and actually live in the park is of interest. Something I've seen in other communities that I would be interested in hearing what the businesses here thought. One thing that really bothered me on the city planning commission, we have... Family and had grown there for seventy-six years, based in Jackson. Planning as an agent to try to deny the owners the ability to develop their property. And I was very concerned. I was against it.
Thank you.
That's my bias.
Speech volumes.
Yes.
Anybody else? Sidney, thank you very much. And we will, we have ballots here and we'll let you know if you would. When you get a chance, just sign your, or sign in. Thank you. And the next commission is for Republican who's for salmon enhancement commission, position number one. Mayor gets now.
Have some reporting and then I'll get to you in Holland, Pat, and sure. And the salmon enhancement program, I think everybody knows this. This is the oldest, it's one of the oldest step programs in Oregon. It's been there since nineteen eighty-one. Those visions by the state wanting to reject the strings, a vision by Montfort and Reyesina, wanting to supplement the salmon in the Depot Bay creeks again. The philosophy of how they were going to do that has changed through the years according to the state. The main result is we usually put in more than put koho into the ocean and you get the harvest from it every year. All of those do not survive. But that's true for say that it's not only the step program, it's the community of Depot Bay, the city councils, the neighbors for kids program, you know, all of Cindiani. But it succeeded, et cetera. Just came over and visited our site and they were asking, I mean, we had the new guy. We had the kids up there. We had city council people. They understood that. A number of those people came away and said, why can't you get this going in the rest of Oregon? How can people ask us about the returning fish? It's very dependent on a number of things. Those fish weren't designed to return. They were designed to be caught out in the ocean to support fisheries, supplement. It becomes a, people, and it's also dependent on our, ocean conditions, whether it be the flood or anything like that. You know, we're in a drought situation here right now. This whole, literally, there wasn't enough water for the fish to get up the streams. What we see also as far as a drought situation is, and Brady can confirm this, we had to start pumping Rocky Creek way early and we were not able to flush all of our last year's fish out of the reservoir. Oh, and yet we've switched a little bit of philosophy as we release about half the fish from South Depot Bay Creek. That seems to be a big result. So we added a few new members. Our loss is, right now, we don't have any young people on commission. And that has always been one of our goals. And so if there's somebody out there that thinks that a young responsible person in their teens would be interested in that, send them our way. And thanks to the city council and the city, the commission has been able to recruit young people into our program part of that commission for, I would say, probably twenty years. Very good thing. Better to be running the program here one of these days. This year, about twenty thousand eggs, we had, we had incredible survival rate. Normally, we would be looking at twenty-five hundred to five thousand egg loss right now. I counted it up this evening. They're all hatch.
Lost twenty thousand?
Yep. And I think I held the numbers right. We only lost seven hundred and forty-two. So that would be good. On the overall, our average pen clicking and release is about twelve to fifteen thousand each year. And that's our, I beg of that, is the pen clicking. It's been a lot of time and recruits a lot of people and state loves it, so do we.
Ray.
Mr. Ray. Beane, I guess, you know, I get and I believe it's a feel-good exercise, okay, in the program, okay? But I guess for me is like, is it a feel-good exercise that has success? And one of the only metrics that we have is whether we can count any returning fish at all. Have you been able to count any returning fish at all?
We haven't counted any. We've counted several in the past, but the metrics, again, Grant, drunk, are not even returning fish. It's the fish takeout in the ocean. And the metrics, the way the state looks at it, is public education, recruiting young people in the field and selling fishing licenses. You know, and for the metrics for the city, I guess that's up to each individual and what they see. But the metrics isn't the returning fish. And part of it is, in a drought situation, when we're pumping water from Rocky Creek over there, a lot of those fish imprint on the Rocky Creek water and they try to go up the fall. Brady, you can verify this in the fall. You know, there are fish. That river's stream's been extinct since I was in the fifth grade. They killed that. There's no reason for a salmon to be trying to jump up there other than they imprint it on the stuff. So the metrics of a returning fish is not, not part of the program.
So this isn't, so it's really not about salmon enhancement? It's about feel-good?
It is about salmon enhancement.
Okay, I'm just saying, is there anything that we can do, okay, besides what we've been doing, to be able to find out if any of these, these fish are returning at all? It's a way that, believe me, Beane, the hatchery system, that's how, that's, on returning fish, that's how they count, you know, survival rates or, you know, if it's working. I mean, I think, I think we should put out a hundred thousand fish, two hundred thousand fish. Certainly, all, all the countries around the Pacific rim that never had, never salmon in them at all are putting literally billions of fish into the Pacific Ocean.
So the survey, and I don't know about this year, but generally, every year, ODFNW will survey South Depot Bay Creek. As far as they're concerned, North Depot Bay Creek is extinct. My experience over since nineteen eighty-one, when you go up to North Depot Bay Creek, if you see one, there's probably three that you nest. You know, and some years we don't see any. Some years we've, in the big year, we've seen two hundred. Part of the philosophy of the state and the hatchery program, and I can be corrected on this, but they do not want the hatchery fish mixing with the native run. And so what we have are usually the hatchery fish or the early fish, the early returners. And we really don't want them mixed. And so with that being said, if those fish are returning early, the Depot Bay streams are low on water. They're beginning to intercept it. I think a validation of that is the number of seals you see around the dam in the fall and the rain. And so there is a native run. There's a small run of native fish up there. There's a small run of steelhead. But the, the success is not in the measure in the number of fish come back. We used to feel poorly about that until our escape biologist said, these fish are designed not to return. We really don't want to see them. We want them on somebody's dinner.
Anybody else?
I'm not a scientist. Any information that I would offer is strictly anecdotal evidence. However, I frequently see our seal population chasing salmon right up to the check, check limit. And yes, they do come back. And I refuse to sit by and allow it to be referred to as a feel-good operation when I know that year after year after year, the fish that they release, the numbers that they release are equal to what our take quota is for the entire state. So I will not sit by and tolerate it being called a feel-good exercise.
At this point, I would like to thank you, Beane, for applying for this. One thing I would like to add, I don't know if you all read this or not, but Beane has been involved in the salmon enhancement commission since nineteen eighty-one.
I'm a chairperson by default. I will tell council and all the, the number of times if you have an issue and I'm not here, the people that come up and will speak before you represent the city, the snip program are going to straightforward those on how they see. And they might see it a little bit differently.
Yeah, and that's, really, that's something more for one of your commission meetings than it is for this interview process.
That's hard.
I appreciate it, Beane. Thank you very much. And we, I think, have all voted out already.
With due respect to the council and congratulate everybody, I have a pretty busy schedule and who would like to excuse themselves?
Okay, do you have a tally? Yes.
Good night.
Bye, Helen.
You ready? I was gonna say, I can open up and give you the answers.
While we're waiting on all the tally, we move on. Reports of officers, boards, or standing committees? We've already had a report on salmon enhancement committee. Do we have anyone representing the commission? Next item is comments. From the audience, who should speak? Mr. Hatch. Let me get a chance to sign.
If you need to get a meter, you have to come in and pay the SDCs for the meter. And I get an okay from the girls that it's been paid and ready, and I'll let the crew know.
Nobody ever told me that. At least three times in the meantime, nobody has, has given any response. So that was my request. I just wondered, how long should I? So that was my request, and I just wondered, how long should I sit wait for that?
Okay, well, we will certainly review the minutes from that meeting, as to what we discussed, and I believe what...
The minutes from the meeting, I went back and read them, and you said that you'd make a decision by the second, the next meeting, and it was amazing, done the next meeting. I agree with that.
Well, I apologize for that, but we will remedy that and get an answer back to you.
Thank you. So, okay, so I understand where we're at.
Request is in there, uh, the council, and we're intending to get it back to you. Was there any discussion with, uh, Lawrence Willis, on this, on this, for Jenny Bobb?
Oh, him? Okay. So it go to you, it go, go to you. So where we're at right now is, is, his question is, is whether or not his current payment for SDCs should cover, should, should it, or should it not cover a second meeting? Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, why should I pay two system development fees for one whole site?
Right.
It's in the ordinance. I believe, I believe that would be because there's additional work, besides just purchasing a meter. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's in the ordinance. It's a, it's an irrigation meter, just like everybody else would have to pay. Um, I have to tap the main, um, there's fees for, for installation, and, uh, the, as far as the SDCs, it is, is still part of our fees that we require for additional meters. It's part of our water system, and how the fees go, we're no different than any other city. We're actually lower than most cities in, in, in fact, we, we are the lowest we'll make account, so. We're no different than any other city.
I understand the fee to tap the main, everything except for the system development fee. Also, we discussed that, and I thought it was agreed that all we had to do is to tee in front of the existing meters, tee off for the irrigation meter. And I've demonstrated that even with all the irrigation I've been doing, it doesn't lower our water pressure, which was a concern about tapping the main.
Right. Again, our ordinance for service line dictates that. I can't do that because it lowers the volume rate, and there's a mandateation of three-quarter inch for state health, rules and regs for Oregon municipalities to have a certain amount of flow and pressure to each hall.
I mean, I should have stopped.
If it was a one-inch line, I could do that. If it's a three-quarter inch line, I can't.
But if, if we allow that to happen, and you sell your home, someone moves in there, and they run the irrigation meter, and they have something going, and a dishwasher burns up or something, then they're going to go to the city and say, what did you do to my system? And they do a little research, I mean, there's, there's situations that could happen like that. Rules and regs are written for a reason, and I have to abide by them.
I would suggest then, that you do not let anybody irrigate their plants off the existing meters they have, because it might burn up their...
Well, that's not my decision, it's just, I'm just saying, that's what's a rules and regulations.
Also, my other question, B, was the system development fee, did, did the Worldmark or Trent West or what they call that place up there, did they pay you two system development fees?
Absolutely, yes.
Are we sure of that?
Yeah, they paid a large, B, because it's a two-inch commercial. They had to do the extra work.
So, um, on the, his question, um, and I get what your answer is, because it's the size of the lines here, but for, um, Worldmark, because they've got a two-inch, uh, commercial connection, did they just pay once SDC, or did they pay two?
They take the fees it costs to install another meter. But they don't have to pay the, uh, the sewage, um, right, the wastewater.
But, uh, and, and on the, the system up there, did they just, just tee off the two-inch line, and put another meter on?
Uh, they, I believe, they tapped, we tapped the main for them on one of them. One of them is like another branch line that they have, they have a four-inch line or anything, and they have several, there's a multitude of meters that run through Worldmark. I think there's, um, several twos, and then a few one-inch meters.
Okay.
Is there anybody else in the area that has an irrigation meter?
Yeah, and there are some in Little Walco that actually for, for their ponds. I don't know if they irrigate with those, I have to do some checking. But I have, I think, two in Little Walco that, that have, Stonebridge has one, yeah, and then for irrigation.
Or just water only. They paid an SDC, Stonebridge Plan Development.
Yeah. So it's in the back of People Bay.
Most of them have to have backflow preventers. Now, I did go to Mr. Hatch's residence and see that he has above the ground, um, backflow preventer at his hose nozzle, which is allowable, as long as it's, you know, not below ground, there's all those lines running on, on the surface, which, um, I had to kind of look into that, because I've, I've had a couple of those over the years, but, um, I had to kind of refresh the, the way it was written, our, our backflow prevented, uh, mandate, so it, it's, it's okay what he does without having that, and it doesn't have to be inspected. So it, it is a, it's almost like the simplest form of backflow, but it is, it is effective. As long as it stays above ground, if it was underground, or a rainwater type system, or a pond, then it'd be required in our, you know, our system's backflow to have a backflow RP, which is a first pressure warning.
In these other instances, you mentioned dock ponds, and so under irrigation places that have irrigation, where they also require to pay an SDC charge. Yeah, we don't just put in here, low in LA, we provide by the local authorities, everybody else, we don't do anything that...
Uh, yeah, I've got the ordinances, um, they're all public information.
So you want me to pay 1,200 some dollars for a system development fee to put in the irrigation meter in my property?
Yeah, I might have, yeah, there's, there's installation, there's the SDCs for the, for the water, system development fees. That's what runs our, our water system, those fees. I mean, if, if we waive that fee, it's, I mean, the next person's going to want to waive it, and, 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 no one does that.
I wouldn't consider...
I mean, nobody does that. Who does that?
For a single residence, for, for just one additional meter added existing residence. Anyhow, that's fine, thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you. We will respond to you.
Thank you, Richard.
Okay, any other topic comments? All right, on to unfinished business, Lincoln County Board of Commissioners' annual joint meeting.
The normal meeting day.
Bates, Grant, calendar?
Yes.
Short.
Yes.
Page has, thank you.
Yes, I would like to nominate Kathy.
Okay, next item is councillor assignments. I believe we have, uh, February of 2018, so it's time to review. Has everyone had a chance to look at this? If you didn't want to keep doing what they were supposed to be doing, and or do something different. Cascade West Council of Governments is, uh, the calendar, Jerome is, uh, Grant is alternate. Cascade West Area Commission on Transportation is me, and Barbara is alternate. Lincoln County Public Safety Coordinating Council is me, and Captain Short is alternate. And Lincoln County Solid Waste Consortium, Agribech closure is me as, uh, primary, and Jerome is alternate. And Oregon Customs and Management Association, Goddard is, uh, primary, and Jerome Grant is second, alternate. Uh, for the review, see, uh, appointments, audit review committee, Jerome and Kathy, and safety committee, Debbie and Barbara, and waste water advisory, Barbara, Jerome, Kathy, and council payable, myself, and Mark. Does anyone like that? Mine, I'm saying, sounds good to me.
So it's in SWAC, and it's you and I, or, so, your backup is SWAC?
Yeah, you didn't read SWAC, you skipped SWAC, it's the national list, one under agencies.
Yeah, I can't get out of that one?
Oh, yeah.
No, you can't get out of that one.
I'm sorry. Lincoln County Solid Waste District Advisory Committee, yeah, that is, Brady is, uh, primary, and Barbara is alternate.
Oh, you're alternate? Yeah, okay, thank you.
Idea that I'd like to put forward, um, I think we have what is a very workable, short-term situation. Uh, Carla's doing an excellent job, um, we have Kathy in temporarily to help with the personnel shortage, and Jody and, um...
Beth.
Beth, thank you, Beth, are doing a great job. So we know that work can move forward. This may be the perfect time, since the city is growing, we don't know what's going to happen there, but if that really fills in, it'll make a big change in, in the city's, uh, not only fiscal situation, but, but working situation. This might be the perfect time to form a committee, kind of the way we did for salary survey, and really maybe get LOC to come in and help us do an analysis of everything that happens in that front office. You know, is it the right things to be happening? Do we have it divided up the way it should be? Do we have the right number of employees? I, I mean, you know, we're never going to have a better opportunity, I don't think. And while I was still up here, I think, 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 I have just a question. Where have the accounting duties gone, and the budgeting duties that were, um, attached to the last city recorder that we let go? Where, where are they now?
They are presently kind of divided in the office, but yes, Jody, Worldmark, and she is working on correcting or organizing what is there and what may be incorrect.
And if I understand it, Kathy is overseeing that process very closely.
Mr. Gray.
Okay. And I would take issue with the, with, you know, too many moving parts here, and the idea that, I think it's a, it's a, it's a problem, looking for, it's a solution, looking for a problem, is going into the, and finding out what everybody should be doing. I mean, really? Everything was working here fine, until, you know, we, I think we, we had maybe not the right person for the job. I would, I would, uh, it's in the city charter that we need a city recorder, okay? Unless we go and redo the city charter, then I think that, uh, short of that, I think we should start a search for a city recorder. And if, if current employees of the city want to apply for the city recorder's job, it's open to them also, and, you know, may, could be, uh, you know, because they know the lay of the land, that, uh, here in the city would be given, uh, even better consideration, because they're here already. But short of that, I, you know, along with that, we need to, we need to move on, we need to look for another city recorder. Not this, not this other, we could do that too, I guess, a little committee, you know, to find out and come about the workload, I don't remember that, that doesn't give us another city recorder, okay? Our charter, we have to have one.
Yes, ma'am.
However, um... Let's figure out how we're going to advertise, and where we're going to advertise to, to see what kind of response we get.
Well, if we advertise the way it is existing right now, then there's no room for, well, okay, whatever.
Um, yes, my concern is advertising the job description we used to hire the last city, last two city reporters, which we had this large budgeting and accounting piece attached. And I think I've said it before, but it, in my experience, working in city government as an employee, I mean, I've known, uh, many city reporters, and that is not something that's typically attached to a professional city recorder job. It's a nice side skill, but, and Curry Murray was able to fulfill that, she picked up those skills somehow, but for us to advertise again, asking for that, I'm not sure that's quite the right time, I think we need to really make sure what job description we're looking at before we advertise.
Well, and I also, I'm sorry, I also think it's important to note that Terry accomplished
I also think it's important to note that Terry accomplished that job by working sixty hours a week. And we cannot expect someone coming in to be willing to put in that kind of time.
That's what she said she did.
Yeah. Oh, and she did. There's no question.
And.
Well, may I? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, please, no.
I was going to turn my suggestion into a motion, so at least.
Please don't.
I'm a committee made up of.
I think we need to. This committee. I'm limited, all right? You know, one way or another. Thirty days or, you know, one month to come up with some recommendations and then move forward. Otherwise, I mean, I'm going to break, I don't have it with me today. I should. I keep a copy right behind my desk. It's been part of what we do here. It's part of city government, and it's up to this council to hire that person, not the, not the city employees.
Yes. I agree with you, B, to the extent that I don't like subcommittees. I like the council committee.
We are the committee.
I know. I believe in the commissions and all that. But in this case, I do see a reason for a subcommittee, and I will add, I agree with you, a time frame, not just letting it go on and on. And I can assure you, I will make sure that that moves along because I feel the same way.
I'm not willing to put a thirty-day time limit on my motion. I would be willing to consider a three-month time frame.
Could you split that and make it two months? I think that would move it more quickly.
Well, we certainly have some.
Forty-five days. That's what difference. That's, that's, that's one, two, three, that's three committees.
Left, Bates, Grant, Callender, Short, Goddard.